The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting here of March 13th, 2023, here held at Weyburn City Council Chambers. It's nice to be back, comes away for a little bit. Our deputy mayor held the last meeting, and I thank them for that. And so, first item in business is approval of minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held here 27th of February 2023. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
I'll second that, your worship.
And for this, because I was not here for that, I will stand for the vote. Call the question, all in favor. I just about did that tonight. I'm passing unanimously. All right, we still, Mr. Mickelson's still away this time as per the past vote. We welcome our youth council here today. And do we have any additions to the agenda?
Your worship, there's none from administration tonight.
Counsel, nothing from there. There's no public hearings and notices. Tonight, we have a proclamation, and we have Lisa Adele and Carrie McFadden here representing the social workers. And the proclamation is this: Whereas the theme for Social Work Week in Saskatchewan March 20th to the 25th, 2023, is social work is essential. Whereas every day, social workers help individuals and families experiencing difficulties in their lives, they provide critical supports and services to help their clients overcome complex challenges, including substance misuse, intimate partner violence, mental health crises, and intergenerational trauma. Whereas across the province, social workers can be found working in public or private practice in community-based organizations, across the health and mental health, education, justice, disability, and child welfare sectors. They may also be engaged in research, policy, planning, or administration. Whereas the Saskatchewan Association of Social Workers, the S.A.S.W., promotes and governs the profession of social work in the province, ensuring accountability of registered social workers and protecting the public through recognized ethical standards of practice. Whereas, there are more than 2,000 social workers currently registered in Saskatchewan. The southeast branch of the S.A.S.W. have approximately 54 members. Therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor, City of Weyburn, Saskatchewan, do hereby proclaim March 20th to the 25th, 2023, Social Work Week in the city of Weyburn. Now, ladies, if you would just step over here and picture, and then just... The consent agenda, within the consent agenda, we have Public Works Report for February, Cash Activity Report for January 2023. Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented, the Public Works Report for February and the Cash Activity Report for January of 2023.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions for, and this is, these are all, these next three motions are all for Director of Engineering, Will Kensen, if she would please talk to us. First one is for the crack sealer tender.
Yes, good evening. So this is for the crack sealer. The Transportation Department requires a crack sealer to protect the streets from deteriorating. An effective crack sealing program can prevent potholes from forming, subsurface damage, and preserve the integrity of the road. This will be a new unit for the Fleet Department. There is no unit for trade. The Fleet Services have an allotted department budget for capital purchases of $125,000 for this crack sealer. On January 9th, a tender was posted on SAS Tenders in the city of Weyburn website for one crack sealer. Quotations were to be received by the city of Weyburn by February 2nd, 2023, at 1:00 PM. A total of 11 tenders were received. One tender was invalid, and the remaining 10 proposals are below, and the total price includes both PST and GST. So you will see there are some companies that gave multiple different options of what they could offer for a crack sealer based on the specifications. So based on a full bid assessment, the crack sealer from Cubex Equipment Marathon Kira 180 best meets the tender and operational requirements as outlined by the city. The next closest tender model, Marathon 130, did not meet all the requirements as a material. That holding containment is undersized for the tender specifications. And then Cubex has also made measurable improvements to the Marathon 180 model, as the 130 was their actual original model. And as such, the following is recommended. It is recommended that the crack sealer be awarded to Cubex Equipment for the model Marathon Kira 180 at a bid price of $86,025 net cost delivered.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd make a motion that the bid of Cubex Equipment for the supply of crack sealer model Marathon Kira 180 in the amount of $86,025 net cost be accepted.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
So just before you were gonna ask questions, so just bring it up, all the full pricing there again, please? So there's one there, you know, like the one for 139 or 145. So what are we getting less, or what are those giving more, that maybe that much, like almost $60,000 more?
So some of these would be larger units. So some companies maybe only carry a larger unit that maybe you would use on highways. So some of these units are quite oversized for what we would see applicable for the city of Weyburn. We actually had Cubex out, well, the Marathon out, and we were actually able to test drive the model that we've chosen. So they actually came and did the demonstration in Weyburn, and most of our public work staff actually got to use this one. So this one that we've picked very much fits what is applicable for the size of city that we have.
And so with this, also the last question here, roughly like the cost of the tar or whatever material used to fill it. Now, once we have this excluding the labor, we're gonna be saving substantially a lot of money by just using, because the tar is not that expensive for the seal.
Yeah, that was something we also assessed, is the units require different tar. So this actually was one of the more cost-effective tars that could be purchased for this unit. So that was another thing. But the biggest thing that will be is that because we won't be waiting on contractors, we can actually go out and crack seal at the right time. If you're tied into a contract, it's one of those things that you have to wait on the contractors to come. Whereas if we have the unit in house, we can send our crews out when the cracks open up, because you can't crack seal all year. It's kind of a spring and fall. You need those cracks to actually be open for us to fill them. So this will allow us better timing and be more effective that way. And then as well as we have it in-house, so we can do more of it.
Okay, other question? John?
Thank you, your worship. What's the life expectancy on a piece of equipment like this?
I'll say the warranty isn't good, but we would hope to get 10 to 15 years, I would say, out of it.
No further questions? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Our next one is the Railway Avenue Water Main Tender.
Okay. So this is the Railway Avenue Water Main Replacement. So the 2023 budget has allocated $400,000 for the Railway Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. We have requested the contractors to provide and maintain temporary overland water service to one residential and four commercial properties during the duration of the project. They will replace approximately 205 meters of 200-millimeter AC water main and associated infrastructure, including two valve replacements, three water main connections, and one hydrant. Lead, they must contain and dispose of all asbestos cement materials in accordance with the city of Weyburn landfill asbestos acceptance procedures, and supply grading and compaction of subbase and base for paving. Following this work, the city will require another contractor to repave the affected section of roadway, which is included in that budgeted number of 400,000. On January 23rd, 2023, the Railway Avenue Water Main Replacement Request for Proposal was posted on the city's new online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SAS Tenders, and the city website. Quotations were received by the city of Weyburn as of Monday, February 27th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. A total of three proposals were received. Only two bidders met the bonding requirements as outlined in the RFP, and those two qualifying bids are summarized below and include PST and GST. So based on the two bids, it is recommended that the 2023 Railway Avenue Water Main Replacement Contract be awarded to A&amp;B Concrete Limited of Weyburn, Saskatchewan, as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Do I have a motion?
Your worship, I would move that the bid of A&amp;B Concrete of Weyburn, Saskatchewan, for the Railway Avenue Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $162,336.39 be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Jen, I sent these to you earlier. Just any reason why there's such a huge discrepancy between A&amp;B and the Accurate HD? And have we worked with A&amp;B before, and are we happy with their work?
So it's really hard to factor in exactly why you would see this massive discrepancy, but a lot of these companies, it would be based on their overhead within their company, what suppliers they're using that are supplying their materials, as well as where they're coming from. If they have to, you know, put their crews up in lodging, their mobilization costs, and all of getting their equipment here, that can drastically affect costs. A&amp;B local, because they are local, wouldn't have a lot of those mobilization costs, and the lodging for their people, so that would make difference versus somebody that would be coming into town that wouldn't be local. Yes, we have worked with A&amp;B Concrete before. They have done, just in the past year, they've done some valve replacements and projects like that, as well as they did the Allen Street Water Main Replacement over by McDonald's. So yes, we're satisfied with the work that they do.
Thank you.
These people are all bonded?
Yes, they all have the bonding requirements. This is one of the few projects within the city we do require a bond on, and the reason for is we consider water service a high priority for the city of Weyburn, and anytime we are putting residents on a boil water advisory, we ensure that we have some extra insurance to make sure that the project can run efficiently and ensure that we are meeting the needs of those residents and commercial businesses when we do. We essentially are taking away their full water service for an extended period of time.
Other questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Phase two environmental assessment, RFP.
All right. Phase two environmental site assessment at Public Works Yard. So the city constructed a new fleet storage facility in 2020 at the Public Works Yard, which is the site. During construction activities for the new fleet storage building, historical hydrocarbon impacted soil was discovered in the construction area. So the city was obligated to report the discovery of historical impacts at the site to the Ministry of Environment in accordance with the Environmental Management and Protection Act 2020/2010, and the Saskatchewan Environmental Code and associated standards. So following MOEs, Guidelines for Impacted Sites, the city had a phase one environmental assessment completed at the site where multiple areas of environmental contamination were identified. A phase two environmental assessment is warranted at the site to fully assess the substances of potential concern in order to fulfill the Ministry of Environment's requirements for impacted sites, including but not limited to a risk assessment and development of a corrective action plan. So the 2023 budget hasn't allocated $100,000 for the phase two environmental assessment at the Public Works Yard. Following this phase two work, the city will liaison with the Ministry of Environment to initiate remedial and/or site management requires, which would be included in this budget. So on January 10th, 2023, the phase two environmental site assessment request proposal was posted on SAS Tenders on the city website. Proposals were received by the city of Weyburn as of Tuesday, February 21st, at 1:00 PM, and a total of 18 proposals were received. So they are summarized below and exclude PST and GST. So all proposals submitted were evaluated with a weighted score on the selection criteria consisting of qualifications, performance, knowledge of regulatory requirements, methodology, borehole rationale, relevant technical experience, and proposed schedule and fees. So in summary, the large number of high-quality proposals submitted for this project resulted in extensive efforts with the review and evaluation process. While there was a wide range of fees submitted, all the firms proposed a qualified team, an understanding of the regulatory requirements, and demonstrated an ability to meet the project objectives from past relevant project experience. Therefore, the evaluation criteria that set the scoring apart was mainly in the methodology and proposed fees. The engineering department considered many factors when evaluating each firm's proposed methodology, including the proposed location, and this includes perimeter, delineation, and background control, depths and quality of boreholes and monitoring wells. Future monitoring, maintenance, and/or decommissioning costs of the proposed monitoring wells were also considered. Out of the top five scoring firms, so the ones listed there, KGS Group submitted the lowest bid. KGS also proposed some optional value-added services that if awarded the project and the city approved the optimal services, they would still remain the lowest bidder of the top five scoring proponents. So I just wanna put out there that I want to give a huge shout-out to the municipal engineer Renee Cognit, who did the assessment on this. This is what she is trained in, and to read 18 of these proposals, and give kudos to the 18 companies that submitted, because these are very extensive proposals, and we can only award to one. So I want to acknowledge the amount of effort that these companies have put in for this, as well as acknowledge her effort in the assessment. And so I'm going to now say it is recommended that the 2023 Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment at the Public Works Yard be awarded to KGS per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Which is how much? Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the bid of KGS Group to provide the Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment at the Public Works Yard in the amount of $48,248, excluding PST and GST be accepted.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Questions?
Thanks, your worship. Not so much a question, but a commentary. Great to see so much under budget on the last three projects, Jen. Thank you very much.
And, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Introductional bylaws. The 2023-3457 Extended Assessment Rule for 2023. Director Mousell.
Good evening. So the Saskatchewan Assessment Management Agency, known as SAMA, has not sent our 2023 Assessment Rule to, like, as of today. So once this is received, we will process and review the rule and get it ready to prepare our 2023 tax notices. But this is also required for it to assessment to go out by April 1st, and we will not meet that deadline, so we are asking for an extension to May 31st, so that we can assess the mail rates before we process the tax notices. And this is done, it's usually done every year, so it's nothing different.
So are, there's just one extended rule, one, because it also has the extended completion of assessment rule? Is there two votes we have to do on this, or just one motion?
No, it's just one.
It'll have three readings, it'd like a bylaw, but yeah, just...
Okay. Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2023-3457, bylaw to extend the assessment rule from April 1st to May 31st, 2023, be read first time.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2023-3457, a bylaw to extend the assessment rule from April 1st to May 31st, 2023, be read a second time.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
The motion that bylaw 2023-3457, a bylaw to extend the assessment rule from April 1st to May 31st, 2023, be given three readings at this meeting.
Worship, I will second that motion.
All in favor? Carried unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2023-3457, a bylaw to extend the assessment rule from April 1st to May 31st, 2023, be read a third time and passed.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Fletcher, you're up. New business, home-based business, home daycare, if you would, please.
Thanks, your worship. So an application has been received from Jade Roberts to operate a home daycare out of their residence at 109 14th Street. It's located in the R2 zone. The business will operate Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It would be considered a controversial use, as the business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. The applicant anticipates a minimal traffic increase with four to six families attending the home for drop-off and pickup daily, and parking on the driveway is available. The zoning bylaw requires that controversial home-based businesses, which involve clients attending the home, go through the neighborhood notice process and receive council approval. Notices were mailed on February 16th to all neighbors within 50 meters of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application. No concerns or objections were received. Home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning that landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw, unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based businesses generally must meet the following provisions: Be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence; be compatible with residential uses; be limited in extent in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients; and not substantially increase the volume of traffic; and not detract from residential character of the zone. The use identified would be considered controversial, as clients will be directed to the home. Staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, and therefore recommending option number one to council. So option number one is that council approves the home-based business permit 2023.003 at 109 14th Street, subject to the conditions provided, and I won't read them all. Option number two would be to refuse the home-based business permit, and the reasons for refusal would have to be provided tonight.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that the home-based permit 2023.003 to allow for a home daycare at 109 14th Street Northeast be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions and discussion? I just have to say that I always am in favor of seeing another daycare open, because daycares are so necessary within our, in our society here. So this is always good to see them and open. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Home-based business, party event rentals, if you would, please?
Thank you, worship. An application has been received from Angelo and Anna to operate a party/events rentals business out of their residence at 317 4th Street Northeast. It's located in the R2 zone. The business will operate Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This to be considered a controversial use, as clients are being directed to the home. The applicant anticipates a minimal traffic increase with four to five customers attending the home daily, and parking is available on the driveway. Again, this is a controversial home-based business, because it involves clients being, attending the home throughout... So neighborhood notices are required and council approval. Notices were mailed on February 17th to all neighbors within 50 meters of the applicant's home. Residents were given the opportunity to comment on the application, and no concerns or objections are received. Home-based businesses are permitted use. Landowners have the right to undertake them, in accordance with the bylaw, and the provisions of the bylaw have been provided. Staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, and therefore recommending option number one to council. Option number one is to approve the home-based business permit 2023.004 at 317 4th Street Northeast, subject to the following conditions, and I won't read them all. Option number two would be the refusal of the home-based business permit, and the reasons for the refusal would have to be provided tonight.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I move that home-based business permit 2023.004 to allow for a party-event rentals business at 317 4th Street Northeast be approved, subject to the conditions as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, John.
I'm just curious as to, do we know what type of inventory they are carrying for this business?
Can you repeat that?
Do we know what type of inventory they are carrying for this type of business?
I believe it'll be like linens and cutlery and stuff you can rent for parties.
Okay, I was just curious as to whether it'd be larger, you know, inventory, equipment, and that sort of thing, and what that storage would look like.
Yeah, not that I know of. All home-based businesses are limited to 25% of the dwelling's floor area, so they would be limited to that.
Okay. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Inquiries and announcements.
Your worship, if I may, I want to give a shout-out to the City Works Department for a fantastic job clearing the snow this weekend. I know Saturday morning, a lot of people told me they had drifts three, four feet high in their driveways, and in the most case, by the time they got themselves shoveled out, the clear arteries were already good to go in town, so well done.
So, and then I have a couple inquiries and announcements. Inquiry, I've had quite a few inquiries about, they say the pool is cold and the water's cold. And I know that the waters, pools are very complicated, because even down where I was in Dominican, the water seemed ice cold, but I mean, it was 32 degrees out, and your skin felt cold. Water and pools and everything are complicated, and also for what they're used for, very complicated. Mr. Warren, you've had many years' experience, can you explain?
Yeah.
Not of traveling, but of, now, but of the pool, you're old, old pool man.
No, no, as a former leisure director, I can answer that question, thanks, your worship. You know, we have to follow standards and regulations put in for it by the province of Saskatchewan. So standards put in place from 1999 states that we have to have between 82 and 85 degrees Fahrenheit for our pool temp. So we're actually regulated as municipally to have that happen, so we follow that with our regular checks. We do regular checks throughout the day. Another thing that we try to do for that facility as well is control the air temperature. So we actually did a rooftop unit expansion in that facility, and now we can control that air temperature and make it a little more stable. So we do 83 degrees Fahrenheit for that, that way. For our pool, it has to be that mixed use, right? And we get a lot of questions, why can't you be a therapeutic pool? Well, therapeutic pools are 90 degrees Fahrenheit, why can't you be strictly a sport pool, right? That's, it's under 82. Our choice in this fit those regulations from the province is to stick between the 82 and the 85. You know, everyone has different feelings when they go into the water, and you just mentioned, when you were on vacation, you felt like it was ice cold. But our staff does a really good job to make sure they maintain our equipment and maintain that, the temperature of that pool. You know, we have so many different usages of that facility, but that's our goal, is to have it between the 82 and 85.
And, and I also want, as, the idea of the pool has been, I've been hit to me many times, and I advise people if they want to see new pool building, I would really like to see some people start a fundraiser towards it to aid the city, because this is very, they're very expensive. The new pool in Regina is, and remember, Regina's got three pools, and they have 150 or 160,000 population. We have one pool... We have one pool, have 11,000 population. So it's really hard to, like, match us to things. What did you say the new, approximately the new pool in Regina is gonna be roughly?
I believe the CAOS report from the city of Regina said $172.7 million. That includes a geothermal for their, for their heat for that facility. Again, you're looking at a 50-meter pool, quite extensive pool. Our pool facility is only 25-meter pool, but that's right now within the CAOS report from the city of Regina is just shy of the $173 million, which is not a cheap.
So a pool that we would be looking at in the future probably would be 60 million or better?
Yeah, I can't really state that right now. You know, that's kind of in flux, what happens, you know, as we review the life expectancy of that facility. It won't be inexpensive, it'll be quite an expensive project as you move forward. Numbers we're seeing for a lot of different infrastructure projects are quite extensive right now. The example is when you talk about a pool at $173 million, that's a lot of money. But, you know, for us, long-term planning is happening for us looking at facilities, and, you know, life expectancy of our facility will come, and we have to be prepared for that moving forward.
And I say this thing about fundraising and things like that, because as we were building the Sparks Center, and I went through that, building Sparks Center, we looked at, there were some areas out in Alberta, and I questioned, like, how did they have such a good one? And they said, well, they've been fundraising for 20 years, and they were able to pump in 20 million privately into this. Look at what we did here in our city for our hospital. We raised eight million our own, but we've got, we had to put up 20% of this hospital to get the hospital what we're getting here. So it becomes, and our hospital is estimated at anywhere from 80 to 110 million. We're talking a pool that's worth 170 million. And we're getting hospital for that, well under that. So pools are very, very expensive, and they're very, very difficult to, and then plus, then you gotta heat them afterwards, right? And the cost of heating and everything, and carbon tax and all that other stuff is going up, so they're a very, a very expensive item within our city to have. That's why you've got one in your backyard.
Two.
Yeah, two, yes.
It's always snowbells.
Yes, there are two, yes. These big potholes here. And any other announcements? Just to remember, Friday is Green Bear Day, St. Patrick's Day. Go to your green bear place of choice on that, St. Patty's Day. Big parades, New York City, always. Anything else? There's no notice of motions, and there's, and with that, we will call an adjournment. Thank you.